Go ahead and call the committee of the board of commissioners, all rise for them. Pledge allegiance, then come on with silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on with silence, please. No changes to the agenda. Here a motion to approve.
A move.
Motion second on favor. Five oh. Public comment time. If anyone has any comments to make, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll move on down. We'll open the floor for the public hearing for the animal control ordinance. There's any questions, discussion, or anything about that. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing session. Move on down to the presentation of the board, financial update, April hand.
Morning.
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 I need to pass out some paperwork if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Okay, what you have before you is our monthly financial report. Year-to-date revenues, seventeen million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Year-to-date expenditures, fifteen million, thirty thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And then, of course, our approved general budget for the year, the sixteen million, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, and seventy-five dollars. Revenues represent one point oh-two of the revenue total for the year. Year-to-date expenditures represent eighty-nine point three percent. And we're point nine five eight into the year, so we're almost through the year. Bank balance as of today, seven million, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-eight cents as of this morning. Bank balance as of a year ago, June the thirtieth, twenty twenty, four million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, five dollars and sixteen cents. The audited fund balance for six thirty twenty twenty, three million, four hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. The unaudited net financials for the year, as of this morning, two million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and ten dollars, for a total unaudited fund balance as of this point, five million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. Can I answer any questions?
If none, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? I think everybody's happy. Looks good.
I just will remind, it's unaudited at this point, but, and we're toward the end of the year, so we do have a little bit more going out than we do coming in, so those numbers will change a little bit. Your second page is actually just an update on the sales tax. As of this date last year, the county had brought in seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-nine cents in sales tax. As of last week, I posted last week, which was April's, this stays a couple of months behind, we have brought in nine hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and seventy-six cents. So, the sales tax continues to stay above where we were last year.
Good news. Good news.
Any questions, or?
Any questions, anybody?
None.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Facilities update. Public Works Director, Dave Spicer.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Board.
Morning.
Certainly, as we come together this morning to look at the facilities, the earthquake damage at the courthouse, that has been completed, we had a walk-through last Thursday, there was a small punch list that was developed therein that. They're still waiting on one product to come back and complete those, that little punch list, there was only like five or six items on that punch list, so that's, that's good news. The water damage that was done to the plaster, that still yet is to be done. The roof project is ongoing, excuse me, so, we are still in the process of getting that taken care of, so the roof will be something that's coming a little bit later and we'll get that took care of. The Daymark Building, they are there now, working on that, so, that work is scheduled now to be completed pretty soon. Not sure exactly how long it will take, probably a couple of weeks, but that, that damage from the flood is, the repairs on that is underway. COA earthquake damage, that's underway, is to be repaired, to fix, the sheet rock is being taken care of where the nails were vibrated out, so that's all been, the issues with that has been eliminated with use of screws. So, if you, if you go over there, you'll see patches on most all of the walls and some of the ceiling, we're working on getting that completed as far as the sheet rock finished, and then we'll have the painting done, and try to get those projects all finished there before they have their open house in July. Transfer facility, we have made some repairs to the tipping floor, that's in better shape now than it was. Of course, this is just something that, a repair that's made to get us by till we can do better, so that, that, that process is taking a little time to get all of it lined up. Hopefully, we'll have the tipping floor project underway after our new budget. So, met with the EQ out there last week, they were very satisfied and happy with what they saw. Of course, as everyone knows, we did get the grant for recycling, so, they came to look at where we was going to do the recycling and how we was going to go about doing the recycling, and some signage and things that, that is designed by them, they came in to see and to make sure and to get a better idea of what was there, so they're happy with that, and our recycling progress is on way, and, and certainly it's on schedule. So, after July one, we'll be able to start spending that money, and the equipment will be ordered, and hopefully, I'm hoping by the first of October, that we're up and going, at least by cold weather maybe, so we're going, we're, we're working as hard as we can on that. The brush grinding, they've moved in, so, the brush grinding's going to be taking place this week, or should be taking place this week, so, all that is underway. The admin building here, we're still waiting, as soon as they get completed at Daymark, they're going to try to work us in here and complete the project here as to fixing the earthquake damage in this building, so we're looking for that to happen in the next couple or three weeks. The fire grounds, a lot of work went on out there Friday, and very appreciative to the ones who came to the workday out there Friday, and we had a lot of stuff go on, a lot of things accomplished, and I'm not trying to steal any of Cole's thunder, but, we did, we did have a lot of work went on out there, and everybody came and, and did a wonderful job, and, and we're farther along now than we was, so, all those things is good. Everything else, all the other facilities, right now is in pretty good shape. We had an inspection at the jails, and there's a few discrepancies there that the inspector found that we'll have to correct, but other than that, we're pretty good on all the rest of the facilities. So, I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
On the recycling, what are, what are we going to do with the metal?
The metal, we're recycling metal now, we'll continue to do that, we have in the budget for a roll-off truck, so, we're going to have some containers that, that, that metal will be placed in, and we're going to start hauling it ourselves, so, that, that's going to be an upcoming project that we'll be working on, so.
So, the county will start hauling?
Yes, sir.
In October, or?
Well, as soon as, as soon as we can get a truck.
Thank you.
But yes. Appreciate the report there, Dave.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Veterans Park Restoration, Jonathan Hartzell and Eric Hamilton, Soil and Water.
Morning.
Morning.
Thank you for allowing us to come talk about this project, much-needed project in the county. And, once again, I'm Jonathan Hartzell with Blue Ridge Resource Conservation and Development. We are a nonprofit that serves the seven counties of the High Country Region, and this is one project we're working on in Allegheny, along with Soil and Water. Next slide. Oh, yeah. So, I'm sure you all are very familiar with the Veterans Memorial Park, it's a great park, this is a lot of the language we use in the grants to try to get money for this project. Go ahead, next slide. Next slide. And here's aerial drone footage picture that Eric took, which is pretty cool, shows the walking loop and Bledsoe Creek, and there's that wood and metal footbridge that crosses from the parking lot to the main part of the park. Next slide. So, what's the, what's the problem, what's the need here for this restoration project? Well, it received significant flooding in the past, it's got these steep vertical banks that are containing all the floodwaters, not allowing it to get out in the floodplain and dissipate that energy, and there's also a lack of native riparian vegetation, those tree roots that hold the soil in place, and there's a, there's quite a bit of invasive species growing in there, which we don't want that to take over the whole stream corridor. So, how can, and, and because of these erosion issues, it makes it dangerous for access for people who visit the park, who fish, for kids who want to get down in the creek, and etc. And it's also really bad for the water quality, because sediment is the number-one pollutant affecting our waterways in our state. And then, lastly, we're losing that valuable land, we don't want to lose that valuable land. Next slide. So, how do we fix this issue? Is we conduct a stream restoration project, which would include grading those banks back, seeding them, stabilizing them, and then planting them with native riparian vegetation. And also, we would add these structures, I don't have a leg, oh, yeah, I do. And this, this, these are from, we already have forty percent designs for this project, which we, we secured some funding to start that process, since oftentimes these projects take several years. So, you see these little structures here, these are called veins, and they're either made of rock or wood, and it's, it deflects the water to the middle of the creek and, and keeps the majority of the flow going towards the middle, and it also creates pool habitat right after these, which is great for trout. Next slide. And here's just another map as part of the design, where you can see all the different parcels, there's, there's several private landowners to either end that were in the process of contacting them to, to see if they would be willing to participate, and I just talked to Eric this morning, it sounds like most of them are agreeable to work on this project, which is, that's great, because ideally, you want to fix both sides of the creek. Next slide. So, here, here's an example of, and I know these pictures are, might be hard to see, but, this is Todd Island Park in Ash County on the New River, here's an example of that rock vein, that's a much bigger river, and here's the bank grading, and we planted it, and that's, that's, that's an example of that type of project. Next slide. So, so far, we've secured twenty-five thousand from the US Fish and Wildlife, the New River Conservancy is committing five thousand, and then, between Soil and Water and Blue Ridge RC&amp;D, we're, we're contributing some in-kind, and then we're applying for grant funds, seventy, this one's one fifty, Eric's applying for twenty thousand through the Soil and Water, and, and both these grants are due in June, this month, so, we'll be getting those out soon, and we would hear back this fall/winter whether or not we got those. And then, I put question mark here because that's, that's an unknown, and we would like to see if there's any potential for Allegheny County to contribute either financially or some for- or some form, form of in-kind towards the project, which would certainly help with the grants, um, saying that the county's in support of this project. Next slide. And then here's just a list of, uh, all the project partners. Slide. And that's all. Any questions?
Questions, anybody? That's a much-needed project right there. Be nice, we can put that together and make that work. That's a, it's a much-visited facility right there. What other questions? We appreciate your.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would, going back to the, to the question marks for the county. I like the in-kind. I don't know what we have, if there's been a conversation or what, you know, we could start with. I don't know if you need support for it or whatnot, but, you know, what can we do to, to help without giving you any money? Basically is what I'm asking to start with.
Are you asking me or?
The, the group, whoever.
I think your next item is actually a, a support letter.
Yeah.
So that, that doesn't cost anything but a, but a vote. But, uh, I think if we started with that, then that would get the, the wheels rolling and then we could try to figure out some different scenarios.
I believe we'd be looking at 22, 23 budget anyway, since the grants won't be until this fall. The project won't start until probably next year.
That's correct.
So we would be.
Yep.
You know, in-kind we could do.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions?
Letter of support.
We appreciate you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on down to general business. Veterans Memorial Park Restoration Project with a letter of support. We just talked about that a little bit. We need to read that or?
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, raise your hand. Five oh. Thank you.
That quick enough.
Quick. Quick. Uh, April Hand, Finance Officer.
Can you give your update on the audit? Uh, we did do RFP for auditing services back in May. We received three bids. Um, we have gone through the process, the finance office, um, with coordination with the county manager's office. We have done our due diligence. We have checked references. We've had conversations with all three firms. And it is the finance office's recom- recommendation that we go with Robinson Farmer Cox. Um, their bid is 52,000 to complete our audit with no additional fees for any extra programs. Um, unless something major were to come up, um, there's not going to be anything extra. We have the, we have, we're locked in for a year, but we have the option of two more years, which is what we asked for in the RFP. Our costs will no, will not increase. It'll be 52,000 for the three years. So we know what our costs will be and that'll be fixed for us. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions? Need a vote on that?
Make a motion, we approve the contract as recommended.
Motion here, second.
Second.
Motion second and discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. Five oh.
Sir. A point of order. I know why, why you did it, but the item, animal control ordinance adoption that we talked about, delay until after closed session, might want to just make the public aware of why we skipped over that. Is that, was that your intention?
Yeah. Let me back up just a second. On animal control orders, we're going to, going to discuss this at the end of the meeting. So we'll be, be taking that up at that point. They go ahead, April.
I think the next thing on the agenda, uh, is the job descriptions. You have two job descriptions, um, for approval today. Both of these were added in the newly adopted budget. Tax Tag and Finance Support Specialist. This is the one that's going to be shared between the tax office and the finance office. Rita and I have gone through the process. Uh, this is basically a combination of a Assistant Tax Collector, Customer Service, and an Accounting Specialist in the Finance Office. Um, at the end of the, uh, job description, you do see where Rita and I both signed off and the dates where we got this finalized. That's the first one. The second one is the IT person that we have in the budget. Information Technology Administrator. This is actually the recommendation from the MAPS Group, the Salary Study that was completed back in 2016. This is their recommendation for that position because it was in that Salary Study back in 2016 that, that Allegheny County needed an IT support person at that point. Can I answer any questions or clarify anything with the job descriptions?
Question.
I'm good. And with the nod and the affirmative from our manager's office, I'm, I would make a motion to approve them as requested, as submitted.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've got some questions.
We have a motion.
I do not, I do not see. It's maintaining the inventory of the IT. Shouldn't that have been in the, in the job description?
Maintaining inventory? Like the computers and things of that sort?
Computers, uh, if we go with the voiceover IP, all of those things, somebody's got to maintain an inventory.
Any type of equipment that's over $5,000, our threshold for capital, fixed assets, the, the finance office is responsible for that. That is something that's audited every year also.
Okay, but now we are going to have a number of items that are not going to be over $5,000. Your desktops will not be over $5,000. He's got to maintain an inventory of the equipment so that whenever there's a software upgrade, he knows where to go to upgrade the software.
Chairman, if I may, I, I think Commissioner John Irwin was correct. I think we need to amend that to include a working, um, identification of the existing as well as a three-to-five-year plan on replacements to coincide with that.
Uh, also the other question that I have, are we going to provide a county vehicle? If we're not going to provide a county vehicle, we're going to have to place in your, uh, job description that they're going to have to use their POV and be reimbursed.
Yeah, we have pool vehicles they could use.
Okay, pool vehicles?
Yes.
Very well, uh, if someone will modify the motion to include the maintaining an inventory of the IT items, I would be glad to sec- second it, Mr. Chairman.
I would do that.
Mark made the motion. He's, he's good with the changes in the motion.
I'll second with the changes.
We got a second on the changes. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, raise your hand. Five oh.
Are those both job descriptions correct, Mr. Chairman?
Right.
Okay.
Line item transfers.
Thank you. Um, next item is just end-of-year line item transfers and adjustments. All of this has to do with salaries or benefits connected with salaries, maybe overtime, maybe FICA, uh, maybe retirement. Um, there's no money we're pulling from anywhere else. We're just transferring around money. Might be a little bit too much in retirement and we need it in salaries. The exception to that is the Veteran Service Officer. Uh, we are taking $920 out of her salary line that's available because we were without a Veteran Service Officer for a few months. Um, she bought flags for all the county buildings in the courtroom. So we need to get that money in that line, that $920 to get that paid. Any questions about any of the adjustments or line items?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman. We'll make a motion to approve.
Motion will hear second. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Five oh.
The next item is our actual pay grade, our salary pay grade. Um, I think you provided the old salary pay grade schedule. Since we have a cost of living increase in the budget, basically the way this is going to work is all of this is going to increase by 2% with that cost of living. It will not increase with any type of performance evaluations that will be specific to the employee. But when we do have budgets that we put a COLA in, that is how that is going to increase. So that's what you have before you, is the 2% increase.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Here a second. Bobby's second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, raise your hand. Five oh.
The next item is just a school capital fund budget amendment. Um, this is to increase that fund by 204,149 dollars. That is the excess that we have brought in through the two articles that are set aside for school, school capital outlay. If I get all that out. Um, that's just to increase that where it's coming to the general fund and we need to put it with that school capital outlay fund.
You hear a motion?
Moving.
Got a motion, second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor, raise your hand. Five oh. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's all for me.
Move on down to Workforce Development Board.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a recommendation.
All right, go ahead.
I would recommend Brandon Edwards and Chuck Billings, uh, fill these, uh, two seats.
We got a motion still here, a second.
I'd second that.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion?
The only discussion that I will have is for, so that for clarification, Brandon Edwards is the son of my first cousin. And, uh, just wanted to let everyone know, I met the young man for the first time approximately two years ago. His father was murdered whenever he was a young child. And his mother moved away and I was in the service and have had no close association with him over the years.
Any further comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
May I just make one comment?
Go ahead.
Your, your agenda has two representatives that were suggested. I just think that since that one has been altered, that, that you just identify the fact that, that, that those recommendations were, were at least received. And as a result, the board has nominated an additional, uh, to take the place of one and that that is the recommendation in motion moving forward.
I believe you just did.
I believe kind of just did. Jennifer and Brandon was, was already. And then we added one with Chuck Billings here to make three in the mix and there's two seats available, correct?
Yes.
So best way to do this is vote each person individually? Or pick two and go?
We've had nominations for two individuals, Mr. Chairman, and with a second. So I believe we need to vote on those two individuals.
Voted on Chuck Billings and Brandon Edwards, right?
Yes.
Got a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Five oh. Thank you. Please schedule.
Chairman, I think these are, these are carryforwards from your last meeting. I believe you received an email from Tiffany regarding the fee structure for AIM, which I believe, uh, I feel like that, uh, provided the background to why the fees are, uh, what they're being recommended. And then if I remember correctly, the only other one was in regards to recreation. And there is a discussion later, I believe, about the future of the pool. So perhaps you delay that until you have that conversation if you feel the need. There was some discussion about the fairgrounds fees. But, um, know that we have some meetings coming up regarding, uh, how to, how to, how to move forward with the fairground situation. And my recommendation at this time would be to accept those fees as identified with the understanding that once we, we've worked through this situation, that those could come up for change.
Mr. Chairman, I question the fees for Allegheny in motion. Since that time, I've received the information that Allegheny County receives grants, which enables us to operate, uh, Allegheny in motion at a substantially reduced rate. My questions have been answered and I will make a motion that we accept the fees as published.
Motion, have a motion on the floor, accept the fees as proposed. Do you hear a second?
I've got a question or comment hanging up.
Sir.
On the, uh, transfer station, number six, brush, evergreen disposal fees. It's, uh, we got a $60 per ton with a $20 minimum. And, and I mean, I personally, I'm okay with that, but I know I've heard a lot of feedback about that $20 minimum from folks going with a handful of brush or two on the back of a pickup. I don't know if that's been a, uh, headache or if that's been much feedback or if y'all have heard anything from that. I just wondered if maybe we could just keep it a straight tonnage fee and just weigh whatever they bring across regardless of how, how much or how little. Why is there, I mean, I'm curious why the $20 minimum, what's it, what's it trying to cover or what's its purpose?
On the fee structure for, um, way, yard waste, uh, brush, grass, li- leaves, whatever. Sometimes folks bring in, um, an amount that's not necessarily a weighable amount. And if, if we bring in large loads and, and sometimes when it's not a weighable amount, the fees are, are waived. Um, we don't necessarily charge. If you have a few sticks, um, you know, it doesn't make sense. Um, the $20 minimum is if you have a, a trailer load that is only going to be 100 pounds maximum. Cause you know, when you pile brush up, there's a lot of airspace.
Right.
And you know, leaves is not, that, there's not that much on there. Um, so the minimum amount is just so that we're trying to recoup some of the money that we have to spend out for grinding. So i- if, if you wish, if the board wishes, um, to just make it a straight tonnage fee and we'll weigh everything that comes in and, and charge accordingly.
Well, I, I mean, I'm okay with that. I just, I know I had heard a lot of complaints for a while when, when I was temporarily sitting in there and, and, and part of that. But, I mean, if we're charging per ton and, and it's basically not, there's, there's, there's such a small amount, it's not measurable, you know, at, at whose discretion? I mean, I heard what you said, but I mean, how are we, does everybody treat that the same? I mean, if you got different people working, how is that, how is that?
Yes, and, and normally when, when, if we, if we do not charge for a handful of brush, it's usually when someone's bringing in some other trash. Um, household trash, of course, we have the waste disposal fees that we charge, uh, with our tax statements. And, um, when, when they're bringing in bags of trash that, that are normally, and you have a few limbs and leaves or maybe some grass clippings that come along with it, um, we normally don't, we don't charge extra for that. But you know, i- if, if they're bringing in specifically yard waste and/or brush, um, we normally i- it have a charge for that. And, and that's just to recoup money. You know, it, we just try to, we're, we're just trying to make it for the county.
Anything else? Thank you, buddy. Thank you, babe. We got a, Sean, you want to go back and amend just a little bit to cover what Michael's talking about, about the fairgrounds fee change?
I make a motion that we approve the fees with the exception of the fairgrounds in Duncan Recreation Center.
Okay. Do I hear a second? A second, yeah. Any further discussion? If not, on the floor, raise your hand.
So just, so are we pulling out those two fees?
Yes.
Is that, so they'll stay, they'll remain as they are?
Right.
Well, I think, my hope is that later on your agenda will come to an understanding on the pool. So the, the one component on the parks and recs fee is whether or not the pool continues. Fairgrounds, again, I, I believe there's a, a good effort being made by a number of different groups to try and, and make that a successful venture. So I, I would, I would suggest that you adopt those schedules for the fairgrounds as they are presented with the option of once that, that venture is worked out, that you go back if need be and adjust that fee structure. But if you do not have one in place, I don't know how quickly we're going to turn this thing around.
Really, don't we, in essence, reserve the right to change fees at any time?
Absolutely.
I just wasn't clear on, with the exception that the way the motion was made, exactly what we were voting on.
You, you could just say you're pulling those two out and you're leaving the other two as, as they are. Because there were essentially have changes at this point.
We got the pool coming up right here in a minute. Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? On the floor, raise your hand. Five oh. Nicole Edwards, Recreation Director.
Morning.
Morning.
Concession stand RFP, I wonder if y'all have had a chance to look over that?
The question I have on this, Mr. Chairman, is since data proposed opening is July the 1st and see if bids are accepted on July the 1st, aren't we a little bit, cutting it a little bit short?
Hit the ground running.
Hit the ground running.
I mean, you, you, there are due by date and then there's an open date and then we coordinate with the next board meeting to have those approved. So a lot of people walk in at the last five minutes.
Motion to approve.
A motion here, a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? No, on the floor, raise your hand. Five oh. Thank you. Duncan Recreation Future. Open the floor for discussion on that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll start it. Right now, we are in competition with the Wellness Center. They have a pool. We also have additional damages from the earthquake, if I understand, and if we do repairs, we have got to bring that pool up to ADA standards. Am I not correct, sir?
That's true.
Additionally, what muddies the water is since we have received grants for that pool, our hands are tied ended. It must be maintained as a point of recreation for 25 years and we have 15 years remaining on that. Is that correct?
Actually, when you look at the, the grant that was written in 2006, that particular section is referencing if you purchased property, that the purchased property would be maintained for 25 years. It's not the actual grant part of that. And Cole and I have had a discussion about it and we can't see anything else in there that requires 25 years unless it was a purchase of property and we didn't do that. That grant was used to make repairs and, and upgrade the, the pool. So, I mean, there are some finer details, excuse me, about that grant that was done in 2006 and it went from 2006 to 2009. But I don't think the restriction for the 25 years applies here because that was for the purchase of property.
Thank you, ma'am. So if we decide to close the pool, remove a building, and utilize it as a pickle court, we would be within the guidelines, correct?
As far as we could tell on that, there wasn't the, it's, it's recreation, that's what it was for. I didn't see anything in there that required it to be maintained as a pool. It would be recreation. And if we wanted to, in the spirit of that, that grant, we could just say, because it did say something about 25 years, I don't think the, the implication is that we're not going to use it for recreation. I think we still are. The question was whether it would continue to be a pool and I, I don't see anything in there that required that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, county manager, what is the cost to bring the building up to ADA standards? Do you have an estimate, sir?
No, sir, I, I do not. I think there were several pictures distributed to each member. You could see the obvious damage within, some more noticeable than others. The liner itself, I believe if you looked at the pool liners itself, you saw numerous cracks in it as well. I believe that the concrete around the top had several cracks in it. It's, it's in my estimation that the funds that would needed to be taken far exceed any insurance recoveries you may have received for the earthquake damage to that pool. Now, there, there are some systems. You've got your saltwater system. You've got a slide or two out there that has, has been purchased, but...
You just don't bring up a heart of stories?
That's all I'll say. And I just see that the pool in its current condition would, would certainly exceed any type of recoveries the county may receive.
If I may, Cole, what was, what was the population or the census, daily census the last year that the pool was open?
I don't have that information.
Memory serves me correct, and I believe it is, it was less than 10. And we did not provide a lifeguard at that time. And we didn't know until the RFP for the, for the phone system for the county came through that there was no phone at the pool. Mr. Chairman, I believe it's time to cut our losses and to reduce the competition within the county for the pool. I would recommend that we turn that pool into a pickle court and take as many of the salt system, hopefully find a buyer for it, recover as much as we can. It's been underutilized and frankly, the county does not have the funds to bring it up to ADA standards and to maintain it.
Mr. Moore?
Cole, I know you're brand new in this and have had a lot on your plate, but I would just be curious as to what your thoughts are since it's going to be in your court, so to speak.
Well, I mean, I, I have a soft spot for the pool. You know, spent every day, every summer as a kid there. But I mean, to be physically responsible, I don't think we can put any more money into it, really. When you get in there and look at the damage, I mean, y'all saw the pictures, I mean, you can put your hand in the top of the wall. So, I mean, who knows what's behind the walls? Best guess, there's probably mold and all kinds of stuff growing through there.
With that said, any thoughts of repurposing yet? Any, have you had a chance to think about what our needs are yet?
You know, pickleball court's not a bad idea.
Basketball court?
Basketball court. I mean, there's, there is a basketball court at Lions Club, but pickleball court, I think that was one of the most...
Shuffleball?
One of the most questioned...
You gotta look at the gray hair on this board. Shuffleball looks, shuffle court looks pretty good.
But I think that was one of the most requested things was pickleball from people moving into the county. And I know there's a number of people that travel outside the county for that.
The, the usage of the pool when it was, I mean, over the years, it's been different. I know recently it's been kind of, kind of depressing, but those that use it, it's, you know, enjoy it, like it, and it means a lot to them. And for the public, we kind of have had a conversation very briefly with the Wellness Center about the possibility of, of, you know, an outdoor pool there at some point, maybe in the future. And I don't want to get anybody's hopes out because that's just very early conversations. But there is some, some possibility of doing something in a, in a different location down the roads for the public's information, so, anyway, thank you.
John, was that a motion?
I will make a motion that we repurpose the Duncan Recreation Center based on a recommendation of a committee to be named.
Do I hear a second? A motion and a second. On the floor? Five oh.
Thank you, sir.
County Manager, Mr. Carter.
Okay. All right, my fingers don't work as fast as some, so. All right, so the first item is the telephone internet RFP, which we tabled at the last meeting to wait until today to see what direction we went in regarding the pool. Now that we have that, I believe within that RFP, one slight modification would be to remove Duncan Rec from the listing. And this RFP was, was put together by our consultant that we hired back a few months ago. And with this slight change in at least facilities, I believe that it is in a, in a good condition to place out for such request.
Well, Mr. Chair, I hate to do this, but since we're going to have to modify it anyway to take a Duncan Recreation Center out, why can't we put in internet access for the fairgrounds? Let the county be responsible for that.
Feeling of the board? Are you in agreement with that?
Kill two birds with one stone.
Did, did we not, we did an RFP, we approved an RFP for internet services at the fairground at the previous meeting, I believe.
Did we? I, I remove that caveat and make a motion that we approve the RFP for the county telephone system.
We've got a motion to approve the telephone system. We have a second.
That would be with the suggested removal of the...
Yep.
Okay.
Get about the fairgrounds, a separate RFP.
Do I hear a second?
Second, yeah.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? No, on the floor? Five oh.
The next item, I think David Spicer alluded to it earlier. We talked about this courthouse roof for quite a while now. And as you see in your packet, we, we received bids. They came in combined better than three times the amount that we had originally had an estimate for. So we had a meeting last week with the low bidder on the project. We had the state involved and we had our engineer involved in that as well to look at ways to reduce the overall base bid. Look at page 78 of your packet. Those are the, basically the understandings that came from that committee meeting. And basically, what it, what it results in, and I'll go back and I'll just read the bids for the, for the record. We received three bids. The base bid, Interstate Roofing Company had a base bid of $88,000. Reich Roofing Service had a base bid of $95,000. And Tech to America had a base bid of $80,385. Now, we did bid two alternatives. Alternative one is the guttering and, and some of the additional work that goes along with it. And alternate two basically was the rebuilding of the chimney that had to come down after the earthquake and provide that structure back. In communication with Tech to America, because they were the lowest base bid submittal, you go to page 78 and you will see that from the originally listed $80,385, and I'm reading from number six on that page, we were able to lower that price down to $65,000 as the base bid. Now, alternate one, we feel that we still need to include because of the guttering and all that that it impacts. So had a conversation with, with the state about, you know, exactly that, that we, we were over budget, we were looking for ways to, to close that gap. And I have verbal confirmation that there doesn't appear to be any problems in obtaining this additional amount. Don't, don't hold me to it, but I have, I have that understanding. And with that understanding, I would ask the board to consider doing two motions. And that's the first one, to accept the courthouse roof base bid to Tech to America in the amount of $65,000. And the second one would be to accept the alternate number one in the amount of $12,106.
Make that motion.
Okay. A second? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No, on the floor, raise your right hand. Five oh.
Just, just for my purposes, can we get the motion on the alternate two because that may come up at some point?
Still move. Second? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? On the floor, raise your right hand. Five oh on the alternate.
Thank you.
Moving on down, county resolution for opioid allocation. County Attorney, Mr. O'Klae.
So I think I've sent out an email to everybody on the board, excuse me, about this settlement. This is a national settlement, although what I'm talking about is just for North Carolina. So there is a memorandum of agreement that I think I had forwarded out. You might have already received it separately too on that list of people. So the resolution is for the board to consider the approval of that memorandum agreement. At this point, the estimate is for opioid issues here in the county that we would receive somewhere around $5.8 million from this settlement. So the, the memorandum is, or the resolution is just to say, yes, we'd like to be a part of that. The actual agreement, I think you'll need to look through to determine exactly, you know, if you're okay with that. I don't think there will be any changes to the actual agreement that is kind of set with the settlement. It's just to determine what option we would choose in that settlement for our county going forward, whether it was an option for existing programs or programs that could be added or something we wanted to craft completely separately to use those funds. So I think we probably are leaning towards option one, which is to utilize programs that either already exist or that could be created through the services that we already provide here in the county. So the resolution is for you to consider to say that you are in agreement, that you would like to settle this. So the resolution is for you to consider to say that you are in agreement, that you would like to settle this, that you'd like to be a part of it, and then thereafter it would be to sign the memorandum of agreement to move forward.
What was, what was Allegheny's appropriation?
In the actual memorandum of agreement, they give you a long, there's a list of all the counties and then municipalities that, what they're receiving. It, it looks like it's a really tiny amount, and it is when you look at it. However, the actual, based on the actual settlement amount, or the proposed settlement amount, it's actually quite a bit of money for the county. The settlement amount in percentage is zero point one four nine and a bunch of other numbers. So it, it's less than a percent, it's just a little over a tenth of a percent. But based on the amount that would be settled for the state out of the national settlement, the, the amount that we're estimating is somewhere around five point eight million.
The state?
No, for Allegheny County. Yes.
I would make a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to approve resolution. Any further discussion? Not on favor, raise your hand. Five oh. Thank you. Up next, Ms. Jennifer Green, Appalachian Health.
Morning.
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 Thank you all for having me back. Got an exciting opportunity to share with you, and I think it's in your packet. I wanna say thank you to Michael specifically for talking with me more about it. We have an opportunity through the Health Resources and Services Administration, HERSA, that funds our community health center work through the Health Department. We're a dual entity, so we get an opportunity to take federal dollars that come in to support primary care that we offer at the Health Department. And through that, there is a special opportunity to do some alteration and renovation project. And we would like to use some of the funds through that non-competitive grant to help do some updates to the Allegheny Health Department. There's some specific things that we have proposed, but there, I'll just tell you their estimates. We would have to bid out the project and get an actual professional assessment of what's needed and possible, and with the whole idea being that we would be able to expand our capacity to see patients. One of the hardest parts of being able to be efficient in our clinical area is having enough exam rooms. And so we have some space that could be repurposed and better utilized. And we also have some other real expensive maintenance things that could be fixed with this opportunity that I think would be a really good benefit to the county. One of the things that's required is a landlord letter of consent because the Health Department itself does not own the building, it's a county building. And so just in comparison, we've done this before. We had the opportunity to apply for a grant to change our dental clinic over in Ash County, and so we got a letter of consent from Ash County to allow us to do that in recognition that it's federal money going into their building. So I think you have a copy of that in your packet, along with a very rough draft. The total funding of the project that we've allocated is four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. It is a complete estimate, and it is, you know, something that we are still waiting on a actual notice of award from the federal government, but in order to appropriate it in alterations and renovation, we, we proposed this, and of course have to have your consent to upload and, and proceed with doing bids and the project. Specifically, some things that we want to address are a roof. We really have, you know, leaking roof, and, you know, that, that happens in buildings over time. And our HVAC systems, you know, it's really important for us to have the temperature right, not only for comfort, but really for the lab to work well. We have to manage the humidity in the, in the space. So, Michael, I don't know if you wanna add anything here, but we're just asking for permission for us to pursue this opportunity.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. The question is, when you, I'm sure we're gonna approve this, but you need to work with our maintenance people, I would assume with, with David, to be sure that it fits into the building, everything is structurally done properly.
Sure, yeah, we would need to work with the county staff, but I think we would also want to hire a firm to actually do an assessment and give us an official plan and, and costs and all of that. These are estimates based on higher costs for building and our best estimate from prior work that we've done, so.
After, you know, several trips to the Health Department, all these things that, that you've mentioned are very much needed and will improve, improve the building for the patients and any of your clients that come through.
Yes.
Commissioner John made a motion, Mark. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is motor vehicle appeal, Ms. Rita Miller.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have one motor vehicle appeal for you this morning. It's a two thousand nine Chevrolet Equinox. Provided was the dealer opinion of value, NADA, and the motor, motor vehicle owner's opinion of value. The assessor recommendation is twenty-four thousand.
License thirty-three.
Where'd the thirty-three, one fifteen come from?
That was the state's, that comes in on the, on the state system, yes.
Good.
And that, that was explained to us a while back. Used car vehicles values are going up, and so they study, they actually study all the sales of that particular model going up.
Going up because they cannot build new cars because they cannot get chips. So the inventory's down, therefore used car inventories are up. Their values are up.
So, I hear a motion.
Motion to approve the, as recommended.
Got a motion to approve as recommended, a second.
Second.
Motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Five oh. Okay. Moving on down. Agenda, Ms. Rita Miller.
Only thing to add from what's already in your packet is the license plate information. One thousand five hundred seventeen transactions compensation was four thousand seven ninety-two eighty-six.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion, here a second. Motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand, five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Goldenfinger.
County Manager comment.
Chairman, I have, I actually have a few this morning. And in all my paperwork, I will come back to it, but basically, one, I wanted to point out that we were fortunate to have our EMS license renewed. It came back in. I know that Linda Edwards and several others put a lot of time and effort into that, so I just wanted to, to give, give that recognition, and it is good until June the thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven, so.
Standing.
That's, that's a great way. Just as some follow-up. At a board meeting maybe now, a couple of months ago, there was an approval for the sign for the fairgrounds. That sign has been ordered, so we're waiting on that. I, I think maybe David had, had mentioned it, but I too want to thank everyone that participated Friday at the Work Day. I think we, we made some dents in some of it, and some of us took more from it than, than others, but I appreciate everybody that did that. I'd also like to mention, if you think back to the, I believe it was the first weekend in June, prior to having the RFP for the internet services we talked about, the board had asked that I contact Mr. Jeff Smith and ask him for the availability to provide that service for that event prior to this RFP going out. And I just wanted to thank him for doing that. He, he did that, and, and we certainly appreciate it. Also, the chamber met with Brian Edwards this past week, and we're working on some ideas about having regular routine meetings to address some of these, these items and topics that we feel are going to be important moving into this next year, so I, I want to express to the board that that process is also moving forward. We've had a little bit of discussion about the nine-one-one funds. Everyone is aware that we submitted an application for a grant. We're still waiting for that. There's, there's been some continued discussion about the nine-one-one fund balance. We're, we're trying to work out some of the confusion that surrounds that. And I believe that we're actually gonna have another meeting with representatives from the nine-one-one board next Monday to continue working on that, that situation. As a, as a future thought, everyone is aware of the Recovery Act monies that we adopted a, a resolution on, and I think probably over the next couple of months that we need to be thinking about the possibility of having a work session to talk about some potential thoughts and ideas on that funding. Internally, we've, we've talked about a few items that, that we'll certainly mention, but I think that is certainly something we should be thinking about. And last thing that I have. David Spicer's here today, and he's here for a number of reasons, including what's coming up. But I just wanted to recognize him because he, he should be somewhere on a beach right now. He, he came in on his day of vacation for the week to be here with us, and I just want to acknowledge and appreciate that.
County Commissioner comments. Commissioner Mark.
I just wanted to back up. We had a conversation about our board chaplain, and, I mean, we, we, we took a position on what we were gonna do with that. Didn't we? I did, I wanna confirm that first. And, and essentially, and I'm put, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna put this out so that the people are aware. We are basically going to, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're gonna have a kind of a rotating chaplain to the board, using, utilizing any local clergy that would like to call the manager's office and determine the, some type of a schedule. And I, I just really wanna put that out there for, for folks to, to be thinking and considering about, because we, we certainly want to begin that process as soon as we feasibly can. I'm not a huge fan of a moment of silence. You know, when I'm, you can't separate the person. You know, when I was voted into this office, I was voted in as who I am. And I have a, a, a belief in God and Jesus as my Savior. I do not, have not ever tried to force my beliefs on anyone. And if anyone in the public has ever felt that way from me, I, at this point, I would, I would humbly apologize for that. I respect anybody's position, where you stand, whether you have a faith in whatever it's in. I would respect that with anyone, so if I've ever, you know, words, you know, there are no perfect human beings. If words that I've said have ever offended anyone, I, I certainly apologize for that, but at the same token, we have pursued legal department to, to look at this. And going forward with the method we've selected, we feel like that we are in line with court cases and, and law that's, that's regarding that, and we plan to pursue it. And I really hate that anyone feels that, you know, our, my belief, or any other member of this board's belief in our faith would affect adversely anyone else in the public. I, I'm here to serve all citizens. I don't care what their belief is, so. I just wanted to put that out there and want to encourage any of our local clergy. And I think we actually had a question about county staff. I don't know if that was fleshed out or not, but maybe there's some county staff that fall into the category of clergy that could also get on that rotation. I would welcome it as my two cents worth, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to mention, it's already been mentioned, we had to clean up the fairgrounds this past Friday. And not just the fairgrounds, but also the courthouse and some other locations in the county, and I think that went very well. I'm not a big fan of extra meetings, but I look at our, all the challenges that the board has coming up in the next few months, and I would recommend that we have more than one work session a month. We've got too many issues that need to be resolved and resolved quickly. I would like to echo what Mark said about the, the prayer. I think that the way that it's been handled in the past has suited me just fine. I do not appreciate, and I do not like moment of silence. One person can silence the whole county. I think that is wrong. I look forward to hopefully our next meeting, having a prayer. People that don't like it, they have to deal with that themselves. But I think there's more Christians in this county and in this country than there are people that are against saying the God's word. And with that all finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner John.
One of the things that came out on our last nine-one-one meeting, which was very interesting, and I think the citizens should be aware of this. There's nothing on record that Allegheny County has ever applied for a nine-one-one grant. Money's out there, and we decided we just apparently didn't want it. One of the things that did come out is our reserve fund for the nine-one-one. Now, for those of you that are not familiar with it, if you will look at your cell phone bill, your home phone bill, there is an extra tax on there. It's called nine-one-one tax, and that is how this money comes in. We have been docked money mainly because we have submitted budgets, and equipment that was on the budget was not approved, but here's the galling part of it, and it's a reason why I sent an email to our state representatives. Two, three, four years later, they make that decision because they were understaffed, that, that equipment was not covered underneath the equipment list at that time, so they deducted. So we think the money's good to go, and then two, three, four years later, the money is taken back. So there, just to give you some idea of what they're working with, there was one woman that was approving the budgets for nine-one-one. There's a hundred and twenty-nine PSAPs or nine-one-one centers. So she had to look over a hundred and twenty-nine separate budgets to make this determination. Now they've added another employee, so the- Now they've added another employee. So the state of North Carolina was simply not staffing this organization in the way it should be, in my opinion. So, you know, you, it's, it's one of those mundane things that impacts us. Uh, it was brought up uh, this last commissioner's meeting. It there had been a problem with the internet service out at the fairgrounds. I contacted the lady that did the Fiber Fest. They had six vendors out there and there was a problem. It was cut off. But uh, a couple of things, whenever you ask for something, especially going over the internet, you've got to provide additional information. This is technical information. How much bandwidth you need. If you don't provide a minimum or a maximum, well, minimum bandwidth, then you will get something that they feel is adequate. And to be quite frank with you, we are limited um, in the bandwidth by the equipment that is provided, but it was free. I guess you get what you pay for. She did say that uh, it was a mo- uh, a minor problem, that the six vendors were satisfied, but we may have a problem next year if they have over fifty vendors. Now that will fall on the county and unfortunately, the equipment that is available as we sit here right now can only provide under a hundred, up to a hundred megabit. Hundred megabit will not do it on a wifi system. We would have to wire the building. Right now, we are coming up on the fourth of July. We had a discussion whenever Mr. Owens was in. Mr. Owens is a Vietnam veteran. He made the comment that whenever his neighbor was shooting off the heavy duty fireworks, it, it sounded like a hundred and twenty-three millimeter rockets coming in and he began, he thought that he was in a different place. He looked it up. As a matter of fact, our learned attorney uh, got on and came up with the North Carolina statute. And it's good Knicks here. If that fireworks leaves the ground, S C misdemeanor. You cannot possess them. The sheriff's deputies that came out and said that they didn't have authority to do anything, or you'll take care of them. All I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I would like to say that um, I like coal. Um, have a soft spot for Duncan Recreation Center. I spent a lot of good times there as a kid and I want the public to know that, you know, this decision wasn't taken lightly. It, it comes a point where you're spending so much more to try to fix something that it's just, it's just not worth uh, what you're thinking. You're putting good money after bad. But that doesn't mean that we can't come up with something else for our youth or, or a new pool. I'm hoping that we can possibly partner with uh, with the wellness center and get, you know, eventually get an outdoor pool there. I think that's a goal that we need to look forward to, to have something for our, uh, our residents and their children to, to enjoy. So um, please don't think this is the end. Um, this can be a new beginning. And I think that we have the right man at the helm here uh, with the recreation department who is very invested with uh, with the local folks and, and our children and having something for them in the future. So um, you know, don't look at it as the end, but look at it as a new beginning. And um, just, just hang in there with us, one, one step at a time. That's all I've got.
Thank you. I'd just like to echo Michelle's thoughts about the pool. My kids went there and, and spent there a long time since way back in seventies and, but times do change and things change and things wear out. And uh, hopefully there's a future like she says over at the Wellness Center in the near future. Maybe something can be worked out there. And the Chamber of Commerce, congratulate them for the progress they're making on, on their challenges and, and uh, trying to work things out there. Thank the fairgrounds for all the work they done last Friday over there. The EMS folks, they've, they've, Linda's done a lot, put in a lot of work on, on that situation there and we want to thank them all for that. That's all I have. But we have a request for a closed session.
What about our next?
Oh yeah, yeah. We need to discuss July's meeting, the fifth. Is there a meeting time? Is, is that the holiday on Monday? We need to move that to the sixth. Whatever. Okay. Okay. You done took care of it. Good deal. July the sixth will be the next meeting date. The request for a closed session, general statute one four three dash three one eight dot one one dot A slash three legal. And we want to add Nick and David.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. April. Just Nick and David.
Thank you. Those two were fine.
Okay. Let's take a five minute break.
Two additions to the animal control ordinance in the latest edition.
Got a motion, got a second, Bobby? Any further discussion? Not on favor, raise your hand. It's five oh. Thank you. Anybody have anything else? Got a motion to adjourn. Got a second?
Second.
All in favor? David appreciates you taking your time off.
Mr. Chairman, do we have to state what we did in closed session or failed to do?
We...
No action was taken.
No action was taken.
No action taken.
In closed session. David appreciates you taking that day off of your vacation to be here and conduct business this way. Sure do. All righty, got a motion, a second, all in favor.